You got six o'clock? Everybody ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth zoning board of appeals. Today's date is November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. My name is Sean Igo. I'm the vice chairman of the board. We have five matters on our agenda tonight. The first matter is petition five, one, four, two. Brenda Lee Kelly, she here? Come on up. Property location at twenty Buckwood Drive, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts. It's in an R forty zoning district. The APD in a zone two. Applicant seeks to modify variance four, eight, four, four dated March eleventh, two thousand twenty by removing the condition for a six-foot stockade fence enclosure around the swimming pool.
I hope they used to give you guys.
Oh, okay, I'll take that from you. Oh, okay, thank you very much. All right. Are you Brenda?
I am.
Okay. So for the record, we have Brenda Kelly in front of us. Okay. I'm gonna hand these out to everybody. Each of us. Okay. Brenda, tell us what you'd like to do here tonight.
So basically, when we had originally, it was gonna be a six-foot around the whole thing, which it is. I have pictures, but they're on my phone. I don't know if you wanna see them. But the backyard is fenced in. And we are gonna put a fence out front. And the problem is that we were asking if we don't have to put the fence over on the side. There's a chain link. But because the reason that we had to put, the reason that we came to that decision, where you guys came to that decision, because the lady behind us
Yeah.
was afraid of the light and the sound and stuff. So she wrote a letter, I don't, I hope you guys have it, and saying that she, she's not concerned about that anymore, because obviously, we went all summer and she wasn't concerned. And then Chris, the neighbor over on the left side of us.
As we're facing you to the left?
Right. It doesn't want us to do it, because we have, we ended up putting up a wall and we have like a area where we both planted stuff. We went in together and planted stuff. And if we put a fence up, it's gonna be up there. And so it's gonna be four or five feet off the ground and then six feet up. And it's gonna, it's just, it just messes up his yard too, so he didn't want it either.
Okay.
So that, and we ended up, we ended up getting an auto cover, which I don't think that was originally on the thing. So we have an auto cover on the pool also.
Okay.
So basically.
By there, I did notice there was a cover on the pool.
Yeah, and that's an auto cover, so it's always covered up unless we're in the pool.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but basically, all we're asking is, because there's a six-foot fence around the yard, all we're asking on Tim's drawing is the, the, over on the left side, we, instead of putting the six-foot, we wanna keep the chain link that's there. And then in the front, there's nothing there right now. And instead of putting the six-foot, we'd like to do a four-foot. So the pool will be fenced in. We just, it's a small area and a six-foot, especially with, on top of the wall, it's gonna be very like.
I saw that over there.
Yeah.
So you're proposing a four-foot along that wall and a four-foot in the front?
Right, so a four-foot white stockade, like it's in the back and the front. So that'll go from, all the way from the house, like, you know, where that, where you walk in those steps, it'll go there and come out and then go across. And then on the wall, just the chain link instead of a six-foot fence on top of that.
Okay. I think my understanding is the law requires a four-foot fence around the pool.
I believe it's four.
Is that correct?
I believe.
Is that your understanding? Okay.
Well, and I believe with the, with the auto cover, you don't even need a fence.
No, you do.
Yeah, I think, I think you still do.
I think the bylaw still says you do.
I think it might be state law with that four-foot fence, just because of kids.
Yeah, which that's what we want. We wanna do the fourth, but we wanna have a fence for sure.
Okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, that's it. Just like I said, the, you know, the neighbors, they, Chris does not want it, because he, like I said, we put all these plants and then he's not gonna be able to see anything. He doesn't want that. And then the lady behind us, she said, she said, no, she doesn't, she doesn't want any additional fencing, just the chain link, which we had originally had said, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, we're gonna go to the board for questions. Mr. Neets, do you have any questions?
I don't think so, but I just wanna confirm, the chain link, the four-foot chain link is going on top of that wall?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's still gonna be, from your side, you know, an obstruction, but it, from Chris's side, it wouldn't be?
Well, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay. And the four-foot along, I don't have any problem with the four-feet at all. But I know it was a condition of the original decision here.
Right.
But in this instance, I think it makes a lot of sense to have the four-foot chain link on the side. And the four-foot in front, as long as, as long as the pool is enclosed by fencing, I think that was my priority concern tonight, was I wasn't so inclined to give exemptions for no fencing around a swimming pool, because of children in the neighborhood or whatever. So.
No, definitely. I think the only reason that it was a six-foot was because of the lady behind us was concerned about the light and sound and stuff, but yeah.
Understandable. And it's a nice-looking white vinyl fence, so it, you know, I'm sure she can't complain.
Yeah.
Place looks good. And I think it'll look better with that little fence out front, too. Give you a little bit more privacy in the pool area, too.
Yeah, and that's, we haven't put it up yet, because we wanted to come back and ask, because originally, it had said the six-foot, so.
Good.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. John, do you have a question?
Just so I understand, so the chain link will go from the rear fence all the way up to the white vinyl fence? It looks like there's a, there's a space here. Is that fenced in?
Um.
It's not highlighted, either yellow or red.
They didn't.
So I don't know, what's going there on the side, in the, in the left-hand corner?
I don't have the, I gave you guys all, um.
One look missing.
Yeah.
He's talking about this space right in here.
About this space.
Oh, okay, great.
That's chain link?
Chain link go all the way up to the vinyl fence? Or does the vinyl fence bend the corner?
Because I think the chain link is already there, so no, I don't think it does go up to.
Well, you can't have it open there. You gonna have that open?
The one thing that, so Tim, he builds pools. And the auto cover, I think it is the state law that if you have the auto cover, you don't have to have the pool fenced in.
Well, I don't think we're gonna.
I'm not going on that basis.
Okay, so that's fine. So yeah, so if we have to put the chain length, we can definitely put the chain length to that space.
If you wanna wrap the white vinyl around the corner, if Chris is all right with that, that's fine with us. As long as there's fence in that gap.
Yeah, even that, that's fine, too, yeah. So as long as we have one of the two.
It has to be a four-foot fence.
There has to be a four-foot fence in all the remaining area that's not already fenced.
So it doesn't matter if we do the white or the chain link. Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna enclose that area?
We will enclose it in, yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Good catch. Jay, questions?
How tall is that, that wall that you have now?
Four foot.
That's four-foot wall? So there'll be four feet and then four feet on top with the, okay. I don't have any other questions. Dick?
The place on the rear right now, it's a six-foot anyways.
Yes, and that goes, that's in the rear and it goes all the way around the backyard to the house. And there's locks on both of the gates also. Yeah.
No, I have no questions or choose.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none.
I'll come at once.
I will note that we do have some letters of support from your neighbors here. Chris George.
No, that's not Chris George.
Chris Reed.
Oh, Chris Reed. Chris George was on the other one.
Oh, okay, that's the wrong one. Okay, Chris Reed. Do I even have Chris Reed's letter? Oh, okay. We know it's here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. To whom it may concern, my name is Christopher Reed. I own the house at twenty-four Buckwood Drive in South Yarmouth. My neighbor at twenty Buckwood Drive is Tim Kelly. Tim installed a pool in our common property line. I have no problem with his pool and don't feel the need for him to make any further changes to his property, including a fence. Well, I think he's in favor of the pool cover. I think that's the only correspondence we have.
Ben Skiver?
To whom it may concern, my name is Candace Van Skiver.
Yep.
I live at twenty-three Nightingale Drive, South Yarmouth, diagonally behind Mr. Tim Kelly and his family, who recently installed an in-ground pool at their home at twenty Buckwood Drive. I attended the board of appeals meeting at which Tim requested a variance to install a pool, and my recollection is that the fence surrounding the pool was part of the town's approved stipulations. The pool installation is attractive and appears safe. As a neighbor, I have no problem or concern with the town considering the pool installation to be complete without the addition of a fence and hope you will relieve Tim of that obligation. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Respectfully, Candace Van Skiver.
Your concern was just that you didn't wanna do the six-foot fence. You were gonna put some fence anyway, weren't you?
Right. Tim just text me, he must be watching it. He said no chain link around, but he, I don't know, he, he's saying that, I think he's saying that Yarmouth, you don't need the fence because of the auto cover.
I want.
Any way we can check on that?
Pardon me?
It's not up to us, it's up to you.
I know years ago, I did an auto cover and it still required the fence.
Yeah, and I have, I don't know of a pool that I've ever seen in this town that doesn't have at least a four-foot fence around it. So I'm not about to give an exemption to that.
You want that for safety anyway. You know, if you, you're not gonna always be covering that cover every time somebody gets in and out of it. So you don't want somebody.
You don't want a three-year-old from down the street to wander away and
Yeah.
fall in. So that's the purpose of the fence.
You want, can we, I think he, he's saying, well, because he installed, he, we own the company.
If he was gonna be concerned, he should have been here, number one.
Can't.
And number two, I'm not gonna exempt a statute that we don't know exists, so.
I think the board is pretty unanimous, we're gonna require at least a four-foot fence.
Okay. He's saying to, can I, can I withdraw the thing and come back to another meeting? He can't be here because he.
Oh, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna change our minds.
Change our minds on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even if the state.
You can tell him we'd love to see him, but I don't think he's, he's gonna change our
Be here, but they told me he couldn't come, so.
You made him stay home.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think there's ample support for your request tonight, so might I suggest that we move forward with that? And if you wanna come back at a later date and ask for something else, if you think you might be entitled to, but maybe we should just address what you're asking for tonight.
So if, so, okay, so if I, if we say okay on that, but then he, so we could still come back and say, oh, like, that we don't need, like, if he has proof that we don't need the fence, he could come back and we could.
Well, conceivably, you'd have to file a new petition, but I can tell you right now that I wouldn't approve that nor any other pool in town that doesn't have a four-foot fence around it.
Okay. I just texted him, I said, what should I do? He did not answer me.
I think you're doing fine without it.
Okay.
Ability, you want that, yeah.
Basically, you're saying, though, if he wanted to, he could come back and say.
Well, he could file a new petition to.
And that makes damn sure that that four-foot fence was up before he got here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll just do that then. We'll, we'll just do that, and then if, oh, wait a minute, he just texts me. No, he's telling me to, can I withdraw the, I withdraw the.
Well, if you withdraw it, you're required to put a six-foot fence up all the way around. Is that what you wanna do?
No.
Okay. I tell you what we're gonna do. You have the, you have the ability to either withdraw the entire petition, or you have the ability to ask us to rule on this. I might suggest you choose the latter. You're going to get what you want tonight.
In worst-case scenario, we can always come back.
You could come back, but I would just suggest that you'd be wasting your time and your money to do that.
Okay.
But I won't speak for everybody else, but I think I've kinda heard that loud and clear on the board. If you want me to poll the board, which I'm more than happy to do right now, would anybody on the board consider anything less than a four-foot fence surrounding this pool?
No.
No. That's five oh against.
He said rule, what does that mean?
That means we're gonna take a vote.
Okay.
If we have a motion. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request with a minimum, with a four-foot fence entirely around the pool.
Minimum four-foot fence around, as proposed on the plan, because they have six feet as required. They're only asking for relief on those two sides.
Sideline on the front.
Sideline on the front will be no less than four feet. Is there a second to that? Second. Okay. Any discussion on the matter?
I just wanna make clear that I would not be inclined to vote in favor of no fence, number one.
Yeah.
And I would not be inclined to change, even if they, there's proof of a statute for the state, I don't think that we're inclined to, to change that. And, and I would not vote in favor of anything if this, if there was no fence there.
Okay.
Because if you're using that to skirt, putting up a fence, every day that goes by, as far as I'm concerned, that fence, that pool needs to be fenced.
Okay, all right. Yep, nope, that's fine. I just, I just didn't wanna do the wrong thing, so.
That's okay.
No disrespect to you guys at all.
Trouble with him or with us, so you can't.
I gotta live with this, I'll.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys, thank you.
Hold on just one second. And any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Do we have any other forms of relief, or is this just the?
Variants.
Variants.
Modify a variance.
We're modifying a variance. Okay, so that's what we're doing, is we're modifying the variance, so this is still variance relief.
Right.
As you know, there's a twenty-day appeal, or you may not know, there's a twenty-day appeal period from the time that the decision is clocked with the town clerk. Technical waiting period after that. Dolores will be in touch with you, or you can check with her after it's clocked in, she'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
You can come over there and pick it up. You need to take it over to the registry of deeds, record it, and just bring a copy back for our records.
Okay.
Okay? Nice to see you, Brenda. Please give our regards to Tim.
I will, thank you.
Have a nice night now.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, let me see where we're at here. Next matter on our petition is petition five, one, four, three, Holly Lemieux, doing business as Root Ritual Esoterics LLC. The property location is twenty-three White's Path, unit twenty-three, in South Yarmouth. It's in a B-one zoning district, as well as an APD in the zone two. The applicant seeks a variance from section three oh three point five, subsection five, subsection three, to allow the use of an existing sign measuring seven feet, eight inches in length, where seven feet is allowed. Is Holly here? Come on up, Holly.
I guess.
Very well, thanks. Have a seat, join us here. Okay. So let me see what you got here. So you, am I understanding correctly, you have a sign already?
Yes, my business was located on six A in Yarmouth Port, and I moved it to twenty-three White's Path. And we have a beautiful carved sign that already exists, and it just happens to be eight inches too long. So I'm hoping to use it.
Okay. And I would imagine it would be somewhat of a hardship, financial hardship, for you to have to replace this and cut the.
Ellie, I think I paid like twenty-six hundred for the sign that I have, and it would probably be about the same to replace it for eight inches shorter.
Right.
Or I could cut the ends off, and that's not, that's not happening, so.
Okay, okay. Well, it seems pretty straightforward. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
That's it.
Dick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, what's ritual?
Oh, we're, we're an esoteric boutique, so we do witchy stuff, tarot crystals, lots and lots of books on historical and religious subjects. It's pretty interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. I understand the reasoning behind what you'd like to do, and happy to have the business there.
Awesome, thank you.
Jay?
You have a, is a tarp sign up right now? Is that temporary? Is that what you have?
Yeah, it's temporary, yeah.
At the same size as the sign you're proposing?
It's a, it's a little shorter, so there should be, I have, I busted out my best Photoshop skills and.
I just was trying to understand how, how large that is compared to the sign that you have.
So it's about the same height, but it's a couple feet shorter. So the sign I have hanging up right now is six-foot, and the one I'm proposing is seven-foot, eight inches.
And the other signs next door don't look like they're that much larger either, so I, I think it's okay.
Okay, all right. John?
I don't have any questions.
Dick, do you have any questions?
And do you have the support of the management of the, of the, of the shopping center, too? I saw something.
There's a letter there.
There's a letter.
Letter.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, these store signs in shopping centers, why aren't they supposed to be of the same style? Do you remember, we had a big, I remember having a big discussion about it for the group sign out in front of a shopping plaza.
Business centers.
Business centers, and they all had to be the uniform colors and, and size.
I think they, they've modified that. I know years ago, we had some lengthy discussions, because we've done a lot with the sign code over the years, but I don't think that's a requirement right now.
I think the uniformity looks, looks better.
Yeah.
But I, I wouldn't expect that we'd be able to enforce it in this instance, because everybody has a different size, color, and shape sign above their business. In the plaza there, I'm not saying that you couldn't, but.
Seems as long as management's okay with it, you know, I mean, they would be the one.
They don't enforce our bylaw, so that's why I asked the chairman about, yeah, so.
I don't remember, Dick, yeah.
Okay, I don't have any problem.
To answer your question, whether they have the permission of the plaza, I do have a, a letter here from Oscar Taylors LLC.
Yeah, I had that, I saw that.
I'll just read that into the record. To whom it may concern, I, Julie Manchester, manager of the Union Station Plaza in South Yarmouth, and office manager of the ownership, Oscar Taylors LLC, do hereby acknowledge and give to our tenant, Holly Lemieux of Ritual Boutique, located at twenty-three L White's Path, Union Station Plaza, permission to represent herself and the property at a town meeting regarding usage of an existing sign, and to acquire a permit for said sign at the location of her business located at the above address. Tenant landlord have discussed the issue and will allow the usage of existing sign if permitted. We appreciate your consideration, and if there are any further questions or comments, I can be reached at the main office at two, three.
Eight-two.
Eight-two, I was gonna say.
B-two.
White's Path in South Yarmouth, or by phone, which is phone number. Thank you kindly, Julie Manchester, manager. So it appears she does have the permission of the.
There's nothing that says common signs.
Seemed to be, I think it was there originally.
We, we had some stuff, yeah, the old bylaw.
Made it more lenient.
Yeah, I, I think we, we kinda tweaked it.
Not me.
I think that's all I have for correspondence. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. We'll close the hearing now to the public, open it up for more discussion. Is anybody prepared to make a, have a discussion or prepared to make a motion?
No discussion, so I'd like to make a motion to accept petition five, one, four, three, as, as written for a variance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second it? Any further discussion?
It's de minimis.
Well, the only thing I would say is, it is a, a small request, okay? Not asking for a lot, and there's no doubt that if you had to go conform with the bylaw and build a new sign, it would be a financial hardship to you.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think by giving you this relief, we're derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. So I do think you qualify as such for a variance. So having said that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Is that the only form of relief that you're asking for? I think it is. Okay. Once the decision is clocked with the town clerk, that'll take a few days. We gotta write it up, I gotta sign it. Gets clocked in, twenty-day appeal period must elapse. After that, you can come and get your variance from Dolores. You need to take it over to the registry of deeds and record it, and bring a copy back to us. And you might wanna give a copy to your landlord, too, for their records as well.
Yep.
Okay? Any questions?
Nope, and then after that, I filed for my sign permit as usual, correct?
That would be with the, well, you, you should get a signed permit, that's just filling out an application, because we just gave you permission for it.
Okay, great.
Holly?
I think so.
You don't even have to wait. You can file for the permit while you're waiting for the other, and they'll hold off on granting the permit?
Okay.
Until they get the recorded decision.
All right, awesome.
I can, you can start that now.
Thank you. All right, beautiful.
Any questions? That's where you go to ask. She's got all the answers. All right.
If she doesn't, the building department does.
Thank you. Moving right along. Next matter on our agenda is petition five, one, four, four, Alfredo and Janelle La Palito.
Palado.
La Palado? Okay. Good, come on up and see us. Property location at twenty-one Television Lane in West Yarmouth. They're in an R-twenty-five zoning district, and the applicant seeks a special permit for a one-oh-four-point-three-point-two subsection two to increase the ridge height of a non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have your petition. Um, there was a question. Planning, what what are you planning on doing? Tell us what you wanna do.
So, e- every time it rains, um, I'd like to say heavy, but it's even not heavy. Uh, we flood in the street and uh, the water gets into my crawl space and uh, if it rains hard, it gets two inches before hitting the floor joists. So I was basically just looking to raise the house up to get it out of the.
You just wanna raise the foundation?
Yeah, that's all I'm looking to do.
Do you have a plan that shows how high you wanna raise it?
I do. Did did I not give it to you?
That one?
Oh, no. Can I give you this one?
Yeah, sure, come on up. Oh, okay. No, that's okay. That's all right. Let let me, let me take a look at this one.
You're full foundation underneath now?
No, it's block, and I'd like to do, um, I'd like to do a poured foundation.
So you're raising it also to meet flood regulations, or?
Yes, exactly. I just wanna go up to the, as low as I can, but just to get out of the water, but according to them, they said they have to go up a significant amount, so I'll go up to.
Six feet, is that what they're looking for?
Yeah.
So.
I think it's currently at five-point-one-five.
I've got you at five-five on your elevation right now.
Okay.
Your new elevation will be twelve-two.
Yes.
Okay, so you're raising about seven feet. What are you planning on doing? Do you have the permission of the association to do this?
Yeah, no, I've got calls from many of my neighbors saying they're in support, because.
Well, I'm just, you you have a homeowners association, correct?
I do.
Did you show them this plan?
No.
Okay, good. I would, it doesn't really have anything to do with us, even if we were inclined to give you permission to do this, which we may. You may wanna check with them, because they're gonna wanna know what the face of this foundation's gonna look like. It's gonna be up in the air. They may have some restrictions as to how it needs to be landscaped or covered or something like that.
I think the president's here.
Well, he's the president, but I don't know what type of real, the total authority he has, but he, and maybe you don't have that. I know everybody else in there is up in the air, but they, are you planning on putting some fill in the front?
Uh, down the line, maybe, but not right now. I was just, I don't think it's in my budget, to be honest with you. I just wanna get out of the flood. I mean, I'm gonna float away eventually.
Okay, how are you going to get up into the house?
Stairs.
Where are the stairs going to be located?
See, I'm not moving the foundation, I'm just going straight up.
Well, I I understand, but where is the staircase gonna be? You need two forms of egress.
Yep.
Okay, so how do you get in and out of the house right now?
So I have a front stairway and I have a back stairway.
Step, it looks like, yeah, step, yeah.
Okay.
The three steps.
All right, so in the front, if you
Seven feet.
If you're up seven feet, um, you're gonna have to come out about seven, at least six feet probably away from the, if you come out into your front yard setback, that doesn't appear to be a problem. If you come out into your side or rear setback, um, where, where's the back door? Is it on the far side?
It's facing, um, my next door neighbor.
Well, you're kitty-cornered, so would it be on the left-hand side of the house?
Yes, I I have a picture if you'd like it.
We have it.
We we have some photos. Let me see where you're at, because, um, I think we might need a little more information, because if if you certainly need to raise that up, yeah.
The back. Notice that, here's the back picture.
So you you're in the backyard with your back door?
My back door's in the backyard.
Okay, so you're gonna be seven feet up in the air. How are you gonna come out? And I mean, are you, you're gonna eliminate your patio where your slider is?
Yep.
What are you gonna do coming out of that door?
Simple set of stairs.
So you're gonna have stairs coming out of the slider, and you're gonna have stairs coming out of the back door?
Yeah, they have stairs, they have a step right now coming out of the back slider in the back door. So I think I'd have to do five steps or six steps.
Um, you'd have to do more than that, I think. Yeah, um, well, at least, but then they're gonna come out on your back. Are they gonna be made out of wood?
Um, trex, maybe.
We consider that to be structural. So you're gonna come out that back door well off the slider, that corner, you're only eleven feet, eight inches. So you're gonna be into your setback. You're on a corner lot, you have two sides, and you have two fronts. It would be a side setback for the rear, it would be a front, and your side setback, you need fifteen feet.
More like ten at most. You're gonna have to go sideways.
Well, you might be able to cut, well, a landing coming out of there has to be four feet off the house.
Okay.
By code. Um, and then you're gonna have to have stairs coming off of that. Uh, now, you might be able to go the stairs to the side and come back into the back of the the backyard. So if you come out of your slider, you got a four-foot landing area, which is gonna be a small deck. Instead of coming straight out towards the backyard, you might go to the side, probably towards the inside, because the outside's gonna put you over there where your septic system is. Who's, uh, all right, so basically, you've got a foundation plan, you're just showing, I I think we're gonna need to have another plan that's gonna show your staircases coming out.
Okay.
And distance to the sideline.
And distances to the sidelines, yeah.
That's that's relief for that, Terry.
Yeah, you're gonna need relief for that as well. In terms of the exposed foundation, um.
Yeah, you wanna cover that?
You know, generally what we do in situations like this is we require something to cover that, or a grade to come up. So it conforms with the um, the neighborhood.
I I'd be happy raising the grade. I I wasn't really planning on doing it now, but I'm happy to raise the grade if if that makes things easier, uh, with setbacks.
Another alternative you might have is, have you seen the uh, horizontal shiplap, the like one-by-twelve whiteboards, they got the little nickel space in between them?
Yep.
A lot of people are using that to cover the foundation. It it's it's a nice finish.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't leave it just a cement. I would definitely, I I I I try to keep things neat. I would definitely try to put something there.
Okay, okay.
I I'm, you know, not looking to do it down dirty, I'm just looking to get out of, I mean, we literally flood every time it rains. We clearly have a flood issue.
We actually run into this quite a bit, because you you, everybody wants to get up.
But usually, it's a raise and replace, rather than just R-A-I-S-E. It's R-A-Z-E that we see more often.
What, knocked down?
That most people are tearing them down, but if you wanna raise the house, that's fine. Um, but I I think what, and I'll confirm this with the board, is everybody in agreement that we need to see, uh, plans as far as your?
I I would not be ready to 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 give the relief without seeing where, how much relief we're giving, uh, for the sidelines, and that might change what response we might get from others and.
And I would suggest you check with your association to see what they're going to, if anything, require of you. I'd be surprised if they didn't.
By all means, I'm happy to stay where I am if my association would fix the flood issue.
Well, I'm just saying.
That's not happened in three years.
You're in an association, there are rules and regulations, and I don't know what yours are.
Yeah.
Um, so this is what I think we're gonna need you to do. Is we're gonna need you to take this plan, and we're gonna need you to show us where the stairs are gonna come out, actual drawings of the stairs, uh, including any landings, and we're gonna need to see that on this plan that shows them how far they are off your setbacks.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? So, would it make things easier or better in a sense if I were to raise the grade?
Well, we're still gonna have to see where your landings are gonna be. That's what's the most important thing to us.
But if I raise my grade, I wouldn't really have big landings, or many steps, I mean.
Well, what you would need to do then, is you see this plan right here?
Yep.
This usually has elevations, which this one doesn't. It should have the actual elevations of the street, which this doesn't.
I think it does on the corner, in small writing. I have a bigger plan if you wanna read it.
Well, you you may, okay, um, but you've got an elevation of well, you you might have a bigger plan, but it's not on the plan that we have. Normally, where you see a a five-five on this foundation, you should have what the elevation is on the grade, the existing grade right now of your lot, so we can actually see how tall it is. It's probably about five-five, because I was over there and it looks like your foundation's right on top of the ground. So it's it's probably about that. But what we need to see is, we need to see, you've already got top of foundation, we know that. We need your landings, we need you the the pictures of your staircase cross-sections, and we need to show those on this plan that show how far they are off your setbacks from your lot lines.
And I'll do that happily, um, but would you guys be opposed if 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 I'm gonna do that? I mean, I I'll price out how much it's gonna cost me to raise the grade if I come back with raising the grade?
Well, you can raise the grade, but you're still gonna need to have landings and stairs.
Yep.
Uh, if you wanna raise the grade, I mean, if you wanna do that, that's fine. If there's no plan to raise the grade, then I for one am probably going to require you to put the vertical, the horizontal boards around there, just for aesthetic purposes.
Yeah, I mean, eventually I was planning down the road to raise the grade, but if I have to, maybe I'll try to take up.
You might find it, you know, you might wanna have a deck in the back rather than another patio on top of the grade. Might be limited on being able to do that.
And you might be limited on be able to do that. I mean, in your front yard, you can do it, but your side yards, you're, I mean, you can't raise the grade six feet when you're only eight feet from your sidelines, gonna be like a cliff right there.
Yeah, no, I, I mean.
I I think you, we'll we'll leave that up to you.
Sure.
Right now, we just need these other things.
Okay, so you wanna see the design of the stairs or raised grade, whatever it is with the platforms?
And depending on what you choose, to what the finished grade is gonna be, is what we need to see, how many stairs are gonna come off. If you're gonna go with the finished grade right now, then you're gonna come off four feet, you're gonna build a staircase. If you went off that, um, you're going, uh, out about nine, you're seven feet in the air. You you're probably at least five feet off those.
Okay.
So you're gonna be into your setbacks. The least you're into your setbacks, the better for you.
Okay.
But I think you could, like I said before, I think you could design it so you could take your staircase and bring it, say, from your side. Well, you're gonna have two staircases in the back.
Yeah.
So you might wanna play with that, but bring them both in towards one another.
Yeah, I'll look at the grades too.
Yeah.
I really wasn't planning on it, but I'll look at it.
So, uh, would you like us to, how long was it gonna take you to have this done?
Um, so you want a civil and a structural again?
We we need to see the, yeah, these have to be all stamped and everything.
Okay, um, well, maybe a month or so. I I would stay next meeting, but I'll be away.
I don't think we can put you on in the next meeting anyway. What's the earliest meeting we can put him on?
The next available would be January ninth.
January ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, we need to have him sign an extension.
Yep.
Okay, we can put you on January ninth.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and we would need you to sign an extension agreement with Dolores.
What's that mean?
Well, we have to, we have to rule within sixty-five days.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna probably go beyond that. We don't, if we don't do that, then you're automatically approved. It's called constructive. So we make you sign the agreements.
Okay.
Yeah.
The deadline for materials is December eighteenth. The deadline for materials for that hearing is December eighteenth. Do you think you'll be able to make that, or?
December eighteenth, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so, um, is everybody in agreement that's what we'll do, is continue him over?
Makes sense.
So, um, anybody prepared to make a motion to continue this matter until January ninth for further hearing and materials?
So moved.
Have a second? Second? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Uh, if you could just sign that extension agreement for your late, and we'll see you, uh, January ninth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the next matter on our petition is petition five-one-four-five Winifer Ortiz Martinez, thirty-four Hoover Road in West Yarmouth. It's in an R-forty zoning district, the APD in zone two, the applicant seeks a special permit per two-oh-two-point-five use P-seven A use to allow a family daycare for up to fi- six children. Do we have the petitioner here?
But no. Shut up.
No?
Nope.
She forget to come?
It's possible. Remind? Okay.
Already, already operating.
Let me take a look here for a second.
It, yeah, it's, yeah, it's got a good.
What's our next, uh, hearing, Dave?
You mean, uh, January ninth is the next open one, is that what you're saying?
She gonna go beyond the sixty-five days with that, though?
It's, it's possible, yeah.
I tell you what, we're not gonna rule on her right now. Well, I'll tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to dismiss her petition. Yeah, but we 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 don't know, okay, um. Petitioner failing to show for the hearing as advertised and published, um, the board having to take action on the matter. Entertained a motion to dismiss the petition for failure to go forward?
So moved. Second?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none. That carries, this petition is dismissed.
Can she reapply within the two-year period?
Yeah, that we didn't take any. All right, next petition is petition five-one-four-six Ramaldo Rosido? That's correct? Okay, I'm doing well. Property located at sixty Grand View Drive, South Yarmouth. It's in an R-forty zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for one-oh-four-point-three-point-two sub-paragraph two and or a variance from section two-oh-three-point-five for side setback relief to increase the height of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Good evening, um.
Identify yourselves for the record, please.
Sure, I I go by Aldo, just to make it easier.
Aldo?
I'm here with my wife Sylvia Rosido.
Hello, how are you tonight?
Thank, good, thanks.
Okay, let's, uh, let's take a look at your plan here. All right, tell us what you wanna do. We see a beautiful house here, um.
So, uh, I guess what, we're hoping to, um, obtain a special permit to reconstruct our home over at sixty Grand View. Basically, we're gonna take the home down to foundation and bring it back up with an additional second floor, um, as well as an, uh, extra piece on the garage, a back porch, and then, um, there's a pool and some hardscape in the back as well.
Okay.
We've been through Concom.
Yep.
We did get an order of conditions.
Yep, we have that in our package. We have your order of conditions. Okay, so you're all set with them. All right, okay, let's see what you got here. Very pretty house. Right, pretty familiar with the lot over there. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add right now? We're gonna have to go for some, some questions from the board. Members may have some. Anything you wanna add right now?
No?
No, thank you.
Okay. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
So it's not constructing a second floor, it's raising and replacing, is that correct?
Uh, to the foundation. So we're gonna leave our existing footprint and foundation in place.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'd like to take those first floor walls out, uh, if we could.
I'm just wondering, it was, it was advertised as constructing a second floor in the structure. We're not a raise and replace, so does that make a difference?
Well, let's take a look at the bylaw. The short answer is, I'm gonna have to take a quick look. Uh, are we? Well, I I think if they're the same section of the bylaw,
Believe they are.
Then we may be able to.
The height.
Uh, well,
That's one of the other.
As long as they're not.
Change, extension, or alteration.
I think they can, uh, let me just look at something here. I think they can probably proceed, because they're they're asking for the relief. It's it's really just semantics. I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's techni- I think it's.
Separate.
Well, they're asking to
It says altered, extended, or raised and replaced. Or raised and replaced, okay. The number two says, yeah. So it's all, even though they didn't ask for raise and replace, but that's, doesn't matter. It's all under the same. They hit the right bylaw. Okay.
Well, I I I I think we're probably.
I just raised the issue for potential.
Oh, no, no, I I I hear what you're saying.
One-oh-four-three dot two, dot two, dot dash two is.
Yep.
It does say altered, extended, or raised and replaced.
And you're also looking for side setback relief, okay, all right. Well, okay, I think we can proceed.
Okay.
All right, so, um.
Are there any, um, correspondence, if there are any?
Uh, that I don't know.
And there is a neighborhood association, do, did did you run it by them at all?
We did, so, uh, before we went to conservation, we ran it by, and, uh, the president Zach, when he pulled the whole place, and I guess everyone was a.
It's a, it's a great-looking plan. I mean, it's really very attractive, very nice. Thanks for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Okay. Wonder if I'll meet you soon.
I know a few people in the neighborhood, and I haven't heard anything from anybody, so that's, that's a good sign.
Yeah, I think they're happy that something's.
Well, it was derelict for a long time, so.
Great neighborhood.
Super, you'll be very happy there.
Any other questions there?
Nope.
John?
No, what's the actual height of of the, uh, the building?
So, um, it's gonna be thirty-four feet. Yeah, the architect kept it one foot, uh, below the allowable thirty-five.
It doesn't count. Who's your architect? See thirty-five. Oh, it's A.D. on the, up in the corner. From the bottom of the foundation, anyway, and from the, yeah.
Good work.
Thank you. Assuming that's the grade.
It it certainly looks like, yeah, it's gonna be a beautiful home.
I don't have any others, right?
Okay. Go ahead, Jay. Go ahead, Jay.
Um, I just wanted to see if I could, on the, on the, uh, the plot, the site plan, um, you're not really getting any closer on the either, if you're looking at the house on the right-hand side, you're at fifteen-four right now, I think. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And so you're just gonna extend that forward a few feet at the same distance from the side setback?
Correct, yep.
And the distance to the front of the house from that new addition, how far is that?
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Distance to that new addition that you're gonna add to the front of the house on that, on the right side?
It's fifteen point four.
Fifteen point four to the side yard, yep.
To the side, yeah, but I'm looking from the front.
Oh, to the front, to the front yard? To the street?
Oh, there's thirty-five feet.
Yeah, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, that's, they get plenty.
So really, the only, only, it's really just extending, extending the current set.
Garage out in the front, yeah.
Extending the current one. Everything else looks like it's in.
And right in here.
In the porch.
Right in there, where, where you see those diagonal lines. That's what they're doing there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, that's extent, but that's not, that's not closer, I guess.
No, but that's where they, they're going to add to the foundation.
Yeah.
Concom didn't have any trouble with that?
No, no.
And, uh, okay, um, now it's thirty-four feet in height from grade, from grade, so I don't have any other questions. That's it.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Are you raising the height of your foundation?
Um, I am, ten inches.
Oh, ten, is that all?
One quarter block.
Oh, okay, that's all?
Yeah.
Now, you got pretty decent elevations on those lots right there. You really do. They, they, they're not low. They're, they're beautiful lots right there. Yeah. Um. No, I, uh, I, I don't really have any questions. It's, uh, pretty well self-explanatory. I think it's a beautiful design. I think it would fit very nicely on that lot. And it is a beautiful lot. I'm very familiar with it.
Where that center window, the, with the eyelid, is, is that space up in the third floor too, or just attic?
So that's just attic.
Just an attic.
Just an attic, yeah.
So there's not stairway up to that space, or?
There is. We're gonna have a stairway going up.
Okay.
But not, not finished.
It's not finished space.
Yeah.
Would you, um, be amenable to a restriction on the use of that third floor space for just storage?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think I'd be comfortable with that.
I, the, uh, the building department won't allow them to have anything but storage up there. Yeah, they won't. I've run into that myself, actually. Oh, so I just built, uh. Okay. Uh, any further questions from the board? Anything you'd like to add, sir?
Thank you.
Man, a few words.
Time's gravity's good. Um, are either one of you two in the back there in opposition to this petition? Okay.
Somebody behind the podium in favor?
No, I don't have any opposition.
Are you here on this matter, ma'am?
No.
Okay. Um.
Last petitioner?
No.
Okay, uh, well, I don't have anything, um, I think it's a very nice plan. I think they meet the criteria of the bylaw. Um, I think it'll fit in very nicely, um, and I don't have a problem with it at all. Anybody else, uh, prepared to either make a motion or begin a discussion on this matter?
I move to approve as submitted.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Neets, is that the variance or the special permit?
Special permit.
I can understand her.
Special permit, correct, yeah, yeah. They don't need a variance, you don't hear.
No.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion to approve the special permit as requested, no conditions. We have a second made by Mr. Frapery. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. There is a twenty-day appeal period after the decision is clocked with the town. Um, after that, you can pick up your special permit from Dolores, take it over to the possible registry of deeds, and record it. That's a technical waiting period. I don't see anybody appealing the decision. Okay, so I wouldn't worry about that.
Thank you very much.
You have one other form of relief. You've asked for a variance. You don't need the variance, so what we would ask you to do is to request that you withdraw the request for variance without prejudice, which means if you ever had to come back, you can. But otherwise, we have to rule on it, and we'd rule against it because you don't need it. So would you like to withdraw it without prejudice? Okay, we have a motion?
No moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That's withdrawn without prejudice. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Begin by spring?
I don't know, yeah, maybe, maybe spring of twenty-five, uh, twenty-six, I mean, yeah. You're not gonna build that one in ninety days. Got minutes?
Two minutes.
Um, have a motion to approve minutes from anybody?
Motion to approve the minutes for October tenth and October twenty-fourth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved. We have another.
I don't sustain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Since I was not asked. Oh, you did vote?
Okay, Frapery, very efficient.
Is that supposed to do them one at a time? Doesn't matter?
Okay, good, they're all set. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries.